Okay, order please. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting today, everyone. I'm councillor Phil St Jean Pickton Ward. I'll be chairing the meeting today. And I'd like to welcome the public, fellow council members, the media and anyone who's joining us in person and electronically for this committee, the whole meeting. Today's committee meeting is being held at Shire Hall in Pickton. Today's agenda lists all of the items before committee for consideration. The recommended motions on today's agenda are shown in boldface. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. This meeting is being livestreamed and any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording from the meeting will be livestreamed on the county's website and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the bottom right-hand corner of the county's homepage at thecounty.ca. Under Agenda Item Six, I will be asking for comments from the audience. Today, there are two comments, two registered comments. If anyone else is present and would like to speak at this section of the agenda, you are welcome to do so. Members of the public who wish to provide comments at future meetings can do so by contacting clerks@pecounty.on.ca to register. Just a reminder that if you participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes and form part of the public record and will be posted to the county's website. I want to remind everyone that while we may differ in opinions, it is important to remain respectful of each other. For those in attendance, please refrain from clapping in the council chambers as it does not add to the discussion and is in contravention of our procedural bylaw. Any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of September the 10th, 2024, at which time council may approve, amend, defer or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. In the event of a fire, please use the applicable two fire exits in Shire Hall or wherever you are tuning in from. For those in Shire Hall, please mute and limit the use of cell phones. Now, could I please get a motion to confirm the agenda? Councillor Prinsen, Mayor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Prinsen, Ferguson, motion that the agenda for the committee, the whole meeting of August 29th, 2024 be confirmed.
All in favor. That is carried. Does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none? Okay, so Agenda Item, sorry? Oh, councillor Penel.
Just in regards to a motion later on regarding Salem Road, which is the road I live on, I've checked it out with the integrity commissioner and bringing that motion forward has no response on my living there.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. Okay, so now we will move on to deputations. Agenda Item 4.1, we have Lars Hansen, the Queen Elizabeth Community Residence to address the committee regarding Queen Elizabeth School redevelopment project. Lars, I'll let you know that as a deputation, you have 10 minutes and I will give you, I'll give you the 30-second heads up as your time is winding down. Thanks Lars. You can start whenever you'd like.
Hear me okay? Yeah, okay. So, members of the committee, as was mentioned, my name is Lars Hansen and I'm here to represent a community group of people who are residents directly related to or in proximity to the Queen Elizabeth School redevelopment that's currently underway. As committee members will be aware, earlier this month, there was a meeting where project manager, Mr. Goohan, provided a report to the group or to the committee, basically talking about the five expressions of interest that were submitted and the desire to, you know, get that group or those participants to redraft their proposals and continue the process. Those of us who were in attendance at that meeting subsequently decided to take it upon ourselves to get together afterwards and try to, you know, positively consider what the process means to our neighbourhood and what we can do to impact the situation in a beneficial manner. Because, you know, realistically, we are very directly impacted by what will be forthcoming. We did, I'm pleased to report that on August the 13th, we got together with some good work from a number of people to recruit interest and we gathered, 40 people came out to engage in that process. And I'm pleased to report that with that meeting, we were able to develop some consensus among the 40 people on four priorities that we think are critically important to the redevelopment of this space. I'm going to go through those quickly and then talk a little bit about them in terms of some detail. The first, and these are represented in terms of prioritization. So, the first interest that was put forward is density. It was all agreed by consensus that we would like to see a proposal that has moderate density, that works in kind of a R1.5 zoning type of situation. And the point of all of that is that it actually fits into the neighbourhood that surrounds it in some measure. You'll note from that that one of the things that we think would be also critical to that is having a 70/30 mix between market price-driven development and a combination of other things that may be affordable housing, geared-to-income housing, other things of that nature. That comes out of the experience that we've seen in other municipalities where it's a successful balance to maintain the kind of integrity, if you will, for the development in an area and people feeling invested in their own homes and their own residences. As well, a second kind of consideration comes to height and we'd like to have the proposal, except only, or except only proposals that don't go beyond three stories. And we say that because we think the height restriction, along with the density, is important to maintaining the character of the neighbourhood, if you want to call it that. And even more so that if possible, that it leaned towards having some relationship to the kind of architecture that already exists there. It suggests that the most common one in that regard is like kind of Edwardian-type architecture that you can see. A third thing that we think is important as a priority is to have a contiguous green space that would be available for playgrounds, community gardens, something of that nature. And the point there is that it isn't become private space, it is public space. And in that regard, it would be beneficial to those who would be residents, who would be living in that development and for those in the surrounding area. We think that's a modest consideration because it can be easily accomplished based on how things are set up and designed and laid out. And last but not least is that, you know, we know that a big part of the proposal is having a social hub and that we would be supportive of that within the parameters described earlier and that that would end up being something that would support the needs of the community, whether it be seniors, other considerations. We know, for example, that the hospice is presently looking for maybe a new future and a new possibilities and maybe that's something that would fit into this consideration as well. Maybe some additional considerations that are more about how a project would get done and that would be that if there's parking being created, that within the confines of that, it'd be something that would have one car per unit of a space that's created for a dwelling. And I say that because some of the proposals that are there are like, you know, proposing 200. If you take a quick look at this, 200 units and you end up with two cars in each unit, that's 400 cars in an area that has no good traffic flow whatsoever. So, we think that's important. And as well, at the same time, we would like to see a kind of, you know, phased approach to the development so that it has with it, you know, whether it be during the construction phase, something that, you know, has a certain parameters for not going overboard on construction vehicles, trucks and respects pedestrian traffic and other things that are in there currently. You know, we recognize that it's the responsibility of the selection committee to pick the point that they feel best suits those needs, or all the needs, I should say, of this project. And, you know, we really are want to make sure that we're working with council and the selection committee to see if the priorities that we've identified here can become the priorities of council and the selection committee themselves. And we do that because we think it represents a stronger redevelopment process and one that embraces, you know, the aspirations of the community. You'll note from, I think, the report that Mr. Goohan had put forward, staff put forward, that one of the risks to this project is that there could be potential local and public opposition to it. We want to mitigate against that risk. We think that we're, like, I would point out that we're not a NIB. The 40 people who gathered together are not kind of like, you know, reject this at all costs scenario. We are open to being, embracing of the kind of priorities that have been put forward in the context, but within a parameters that make sense and still respect the neighbourhood. To that end, we would like to see, you know, a public input process that can be beneficial, we think, to having some, maybe some changes, some things that would be beneficial. That would include, you know, considering the idea from this, our community organisation, the ideas we've put forward here today and look at them in terms of what the four points are for the council themselves and to be, you know, deem them to be important to your decision-making process. We would like you, as a council and the selection committee, to embrace those. And that we would further then ask that the council be prepared to share through the project manager and the selection committee those priorities in a summary to the, you know, applying developers so that they have the direction and I think the parameters by which to do something that would be more likely to be embraced by the community. And then I think this is equally, or perhaps most important, is that we would be open to the idea and would think it would be great benefit from having the selection committee expanded to include two ex officio members from the public, not that they would have any voting standing or decision-making, but could be there really to act as a kind of informative sounding board, if you will, and for the public to be involved in that. We think that that would be a good appreciation of the public interest in this process. We strongly believe, like, this is the best path forward. It would allow the project to accomplish the goals of council, it would respect the needs of the community and would be something that would be, you know, worth having, if you want to call it that. It would bring our community together and allow for a spirit of collaboration and I think equally important forestall potential opposition to a process that ignores the priority of the immediate, priorities of the immediate community. We are seeking to be reasonable and I think that this is an opportunity for council and the selection committee itself to be representative of our community and realistically to be partners in a future that everyone can be embraced and supported of. Thank you.
Thank you very much Lars. Just before I go to questions from the committee, I would like to say that both councillor McNaughton and I, first of all, on my behalf, I much appreciate all the input that we've received from the, from all of the residents, carefully thought out, well thought out and caring about the future of the community. So, and I do, would like to apologize again for both my inability to attend a meeting in the last two weeks and councillor McNaughton, who is on her way back from Vancouver at this point. So, you know, and I very much want to continue that conversation with the community. In fact, I would like to meet with you next week, as I suggested in my earlier email. So, I wanted to say that so the council members know that both Kate, councillor McNaughton and I have been active on this and are looking for ways to involve the community as much as possible to make sure that we do come up with a resolution or a solution for that site that works for everybody. So, anyways, having said that, actually, I should go to the CAO first.
Thank you, Chair. And it's unusual for me to speak after a deputation, but I just want to make sure those in the audience and those watching are clear, there is no selection committee where we are in the process. The selection committee, the tenant selection committee was dissolved at the last meeting, which gave advice, which definitely leaned towards some kind of community hub in combination with housing as a proposed best option. Where we are right now is that staff are working with the five proponents to have them reflect on what the conversation with council revealed and fine-tune their proposals or else step back if they're not interested. And then a report will be coming to council probably in November and, thank you clerk, and it is council making that decision now. So, there is no selection committee, it will be a decision of council. So, the path you're talking about with local ward councils engaging with the community makes sense in that context.
That's, yes, and that's all part of the, maybe a little bit expanded beyond the public, the sole public meeting that was maybe being suggested. So, councillor McNaughton and I definitely want to work ahead of that as well as having a public meeting. And the other thing I need to add has to do with circulation of the information. Again, I thank you very much for everything that you, the community group has put forward. That information, all of it, has been forwarded to Director Goheen and to my knowledge, has also been circulated to all of the applicants. So, they are well aware of what the interest is and the direction that we're hoping to see to follow from your steps. So, now I'm going to go back to council and ask, does anyone have any questions for the deputy? Mayor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you very much. I want to, he's on. I want to thank you for the deputation. I read through this, it's clear, articulate, it's really, really well done and I much appreciate the tone and everything else, as I'm sure my colleagues do as well. Has a deputation been circulated to, I don't know if this is a question better posed to you, Mr. Chair, whether deputation has been circulated to Adam? If not, it's now public and it shouldn't.
Do you mean, sorry, through the chair to the mayor, you mean Adam Goheen, the director?
Yeah.
Yes, it did go to Adam and he is sharing with the, all of the, all the five bidders as interested parties, as the chair noted.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that happened. Thank you very much.
Well, and to that point, I think one of the things that we are here today for is to seek, you know, I respect what was brought forward about the nature of the selection committee now being kind of, you know, dissolved. Our desire is to see that what we're bringing forward impacts. So, I'm pleased to hear that it's gone to Adam Goheen and I'm pleased to hear it's gone to the developers themselves. And I think the only other thing we would be seeking then is some, whether it be the committee of the whole or council, to be seen not to just share the information but to endorse the priorities themselves. Because we think that that's, you know, we'd like it to be more of a need to do than a nice to do and I think that's, terms of reference are critically important in this kind of process for a developer.
Members of council, councillor Penel, question for the deputy?
Not really a question, but thanks for your deputation and I think you'll find that council is more than willing to work to make this project successful and that definitely does include your ideas. But as an individual, as a councillor, it would be nice to see a copy of your deputation distributed to all council.
It's in your package.
Do that, actually, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thanks.
We're more than happy to resend if that's appropriate.
Any further questions from members of council at this point? No? Okay. Thank you very much Lars and I can rest assure, I'll be in touch with you. Councillor McNaughton and I will be in touch with, hopefully setting up a meeting Tuesday, Thursday next week so we can keep this thing moving forward progressively. So, okay, we'll talk after the meeting, how's that? So, now I need a mover and a seconder for the motion. Councillor Maynard, councillor Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maynard Nyman motioned that the deputation of Lars Hansen, the Queen E. Community regarding the Queen Elizabeth redevelopment project be received.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. So, next we have Bill Sanderson, General Manager, Quinney Waste Solutions, to address the committee regarding Blue Box recycling transition update. So, welcome, Bill. Good to see you again. And as a presentation, you have 20 minutes, so.
And members of council, I think I'll start just by giving myself a little introduction. I became the General Manager of Quinney Waste Solutions in June of 2023, last year. Prior to that, I had been a member of Belleville City Councilor, representing Ward Two Thurlow. And during that time, I sat on the Centre in South Hastings Waste Services Board as the, as the Chair and, I'm sorry, Vice Chair. And at that time, Mike Harper was the representative from the county that I worked with. So, that's a little bit about my background in terms of how I became into the role and what I bring into the role. So, on behalf, I'll start the presentation and everybody hear me okay? Good. So, on behalf of the Centre in South Hastings Waste Services Board, I'm pleased to join your committee of the whole meeting today to provide you with an update on the Blue Box transition. As background, the Centre in South Hastings Waste Services Board formed over 30 years ago when councils of the day joined together for the primary purpose of diverting material from landfill. The, they established Quinney Waste Solutions to manage the collection, processing and disposal of Blue Box recyclable material and also hazardous and electronic waste. So, basically, it's a joint board and it is owned and operated by the Centre in South Hastings Waste Services Board, of which Prince Edward County has about a 20% stake in that operation. Service providers have changed over the years and we're currently contracted with GFL Environmental Services and that contract expires on August the 4th, 2025. Municipalities provided their own waste management, that's garbage, organics, bulky items, excuse me, and operated a number of landfill sites throughout our catchment area. So, moving on to the transition itself, in 2019, the transition of Blue Box to producer responsibility began to take shape in earnest. Municipal costs and political pressures led to the extended producer responsibility, EPR, where producers would now become responsible for all eligible sources of recyclable materials. The transition timeline is included in the report that, that's online as previously mentioned. And the Ontario legislation, which is Blue Box Regulation 391-21, has been amended five times since the initial document was approved. So, it's been a bit of an evolution as some of the earlier municipalities have transitioned and there have been changes made to the document. The producers themselves engaged Central, I apologize for that, that's my phone, that I thought I turned off.
I'll give you a moment to shut it off if you wish and you won't lose any time. I won't penalize you.
Mine's a freak train, freak train horn. In 2020, the Centre in South Hastings Waste Services Board, there's no easy way to say that, opted out of Blue Box recycling, which meant that the producers would be responsible for the collection, processing and disposal of all eligible materials from the transition date onward. The board chose July 17th, 2025 as their transition date, in part to benefit from the learnings of the municipalities that were transitioning earlier in the plan and to minimize the risk. The producers engaged Circular Materials as their Circular Materials Ontario as their agent to manage the transition across the 443 municipalities in Ontario. As part of the management of the transition, myself have engaged with Circular Materials Ontario as part of their municipal working group, the Continuous Improvement Fund, which is known as CIF, on their program transition committee and also Reverse Logistics Group, RLG Contract Administration, as well as the RPRA, which stands for Resource Productivity and Recovery Authority, basically their compliance support group. So, updates as we've progressed along the transition, updates have been provided on a regular basis to the board and their respective municipal staff. And as, as of the last three to four months, we've actually have staff attending the board meeting and that's become a regular occurrence that will continue through to July of next Yeah, so the nine-membered municipalities were part of, if you hear the terminology, catchment area five, that's us, and CMO issued an RFP 202306 for our area earlier this year, which closed on April 19th. Now, at the time I wrote this report, the, the contract had not been awarded, but I received news earlier this week that the, the CMO has awarded the contract to E360 Solutions. So, post-transition, which again is July 17th, E360 will become the collector of recyclable Currently, of course, it's GFL, so there's going to be a transition that we're going to have to manage and make sure that we hand off, you know, seamlessly for the residents. One aspect that wasn't defined in the Regulation 391-21 is a depot. And that did create some confusion, which is now behind us, but long story short, we had three locations within the board's jurisdiction that had originally been considered common collection locations, CCLs, and because it was mixed materials that were being received at these landfill sites, it was, the definition basically got changed, that they became depots. So, this was the one, excuse me, in Centre Hastings, the one in Tweed and the one in Belleville. And we did have to engage with the compliance team at RPRA to make sure that CMO recognized them as depots and started the negotiation process with each of those three municipalities. And that, and that has been done. So, summary statement, I think the board is, and the board would tell you that they're well positioned to effectively manage the Blue Box transition on July 17th with the responsibility of eligible source. responsibility of eligible source materials shifting to the contractor, and as I mentioned, that is going to be E360 Solutions. Just a final comment, and I know it's not part of the eligible source material, but the board is also exploring, as are each of the municipalities, their own alternatives for the collection of non-eligible sources. And I understand for yourselves that there'll be a report coming to council or to this committee sometime over the next two weeks with some various options to be considered. So that's it for my presentation. I'll certainly open forward to any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bill. I'd like to members of council, questions for Bill? Counselor Pennell, then Counselor Nyman, and then Counselor Hirsch.
As we move ahead in this transition, what is the costing to the municipalities? Is it going up, staying the same? I'm certain there won't be a reduction, although I'd like to think there was.
Okay, so that's a good question. So the budget for our operation, so let me back up. So you've got the board who own and operate Quinney Waste Solutions. Quinney Waste Solutions provide, one of the services they provide is the Blue Box Recycling. The other service they provide is the hazardous and electronic waste. The budget for 2024, the operating budget was around 5.3 million. For 2025, we're actually going to be presenting the budget at our September board meeting, well in advance of '25, and you're going to see a significant reduction. Basically, from a Blue Box perspective, we're running the operation for only a little over half of the year. Also, when I took over the position of General Manager, we had, I believe it was seven full-time resources and one part-time resource dedicated specifically to Blue Box Recycling and the operation at the material recycling facility. That administration, if you will, has been reduced to full-time and one part-time. So we're seeing some benefits as a result of restructuring the organization, and we've also seen some benefits in terms of processing. So I can't give you a specific number in terms of what the county will see, but it will be reduced.
Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was one of my questions, but the other question is, how does this affect the board and its ongoing business? Because I guess E360 has taken over most of it, is that correct? Or just help me understand it a bit, I guess.
Sure. So there's two portions to the business. On the Blue Box Recycling portion of the business, when it transitions July 17th, effectively, that part of the operation closes. The property physically at 270 West Street, which is owned by the board, will be available for sale. So that portion of the business closes down. There are ongoing discussions on the hazardous and electronic waste side of the business. The board is exploring a number of alternatives, but haven't made a decision in terms of what direction they're going to go in next year. The budget that's being set indicates that the hazardous and electronic waste portion of the business will continue through the full year of 2025.
Sure.
So the need for the board is still going to be there, I guess, or?
The board has made a decision, and I'm not sure whether it's out there for public consumption or not. Maybe I could ask the mayor whether...
Counselor Engelsdorfer is on the screen, who is our representative on your board.
Sure. Yeah, I know Cory.
Hey, Bill, I don't think we've discussed it as a council yet, so I think, yeah.
So it's a question that does need to be answered.
Next, I have Counselor Hirsch, followed by Counselor Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Bill, for coming and updating us on where this is at. It sure has been a long process. I remember in 2019, when they said, oh, the producers are going to cover the cost, and here we are in 2024, and it's still a year away. Anyway, my question, and we've had this discussion around the horseshoe before, about eligible versus non-eligible materials, and it seemed to us, at least a few months ago, to a bit of a surprise, that some locations would not be considered eligible materials, so there might be another pickup required. So I wonder if we could run through that. There was a chart at the very end of your material, and if I'm not mistaken, if you think of commercial restaurants, that kind of thing, if there are no residents on site, according to this, that's not eligible material. So what happens to picking up those recyclables?
I think I'm going to ask Albert to come up.
Through the mayor, or sorry, through the chair, to Counselor Hirsch. If it's not a question the deputy can't answer, then it should be referred to the conversation we're going to have at the September 13th committee, the whole meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I have Counselor Maynard, then the mayor, and then Counselor Brandhorst.
So, I may have just got my answer, but it's just these, I mean, this is great, this is great news for people that are, you know, in that eligible group, that producers are going to now be responsible for picking up their material. But if we now have two, because there's going to be so many ineligible ones, has the board even discussed any options, or you just, we'll have to find our own, or those people that are ineligible will have to find their own way of disposing of their recyclables?
No, the board is, has actually made a decision that the service to non-eligible will continue. That's a decision of the board. Basically, this would have been perhaps two months ago, the board passed a resolution that the municipalities of Belleville, and their admin person was Joe Reed, the Director of Public Works, as well as Quinney West, their director being Chris Angelo. Those two gentlemen were to explore with their incumbent supplier, E360, who also provides service to the county for garbage and for composting. They were going to explore with them the feasibility of them providing service for non-eligible sources. As a result of that discussion or investigation, they were going to report back to council in whatever terms they may or may not have been able to negotiate would have been offered up to the other seven municipalities. However, that was before the announcement this week that E360 has actually been awarded the business for regular, or approved, if you will, recycling material, Blue Box curbside. So I'm hopeful that that may be an option, that we get an update at our September 16th board meeting from those two communities.
So just, who will be looking after, like, which group or which authority then is looking after that non-eligible or ineligible collections?
So each municipality is responsible for their own, but the way the board is approaching it is that they're trying to negotiate a contract that can benefit all nine-membered municipalities of the board.
Okay. And they will then, will figure out some kind of a payment, like how you, you know, how the ineligible customers pay their share, if the other is being paid by the producers?
Yeah. Currently, what we did, Counselor, was in the last contract, which was awarded to GFL, prior to that, the service provider was HGC, and the pricing model with them was based on tonnage. That changed with the contract for GFL, and basically, the contract payments were based on the number of stops. So it's a little simpler to manage from a pricing point of view. I don't know whether they would adopt a similar approach for non-eligible and base it on the number of stops, but basically, that's what we're looking for, those two communities to bring back to the table.
Thank you.
Mayor Ferguson, followed by Counselor Brandhorst.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. My questions pertain to eligible and non-eligible materials, so I'll wait until the committee of the whole meeting in September. So I'll withdraw the questions.
Okay. Counselor Brandhorst.
That was also my question, but then a new one popped up, so I'll ask that. Thank you for your time, and I just wanted to ask specifically, is there any fear of some of the non-eligible entities, such as either restaurants, farms, there's a huge list, trailer parks, campground, of recycling and other what would be considered eligible products for pickup, be putting into the waste-based systems and/or other means of getting rid of them, such as burning, instead of using more of the, like, are they worried that this will have less of an environmental impact than I think that is the original intention by the provincial government?
I don't know, I don't know that it's a concern specifically, but it's certainly a possibility. And I think what we'd like to consider is that these are all, you know, good stewards of the community, you know, good businesses that are environmentally conscious, because they use the system today. So provided the tax levy is not punitive, the board is of the opinion that the behavior will not change.
Anyone else have any question? I know Counselor Engelsdorfer wants to speak last, so I'll, thank you, from my point of view, thank you, Bill, and I certainly understand from what CAO said, a number of my questions, just like others, will be addressed on September 13th. Hopefully, they will be clarified, because, you know, as I've stated in the past, with regards to non-eligibles, particularly in the very large impact I think that'll have on all of our commercial districts, and I don't just mean here in the county, I mean Belleville, Quinney West, everywhere. I will make a statement, I think the province's system of developing this is shortsighted and not inclusive enough. I know that's not directed at you, but it's certainly a statement that I'd like to make. So I look forward to hearing what else is, what else we'll learn on September 13th from our own environmental staff, but for now, that's all I have to say. Counselor Engelsdorfer? I'll pass it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank, thank you, Bill, for the presentation, and thank you for the work that you've done over the last year leading up to transition. I know it hasn't been an easy process, there's a lot of moving parts, and you've been great to work with, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Look forward to seeing more information as this develops. It's, I think it's the right thing to do, because we certainly, as you know, as a former counselor in Belleville, the stresses on ratepayers in all of our municipalities have been really great, and recycling programs don't come cheap. And any relief that I'm sure all of us will greatly appreciate in the end, but thank you very much for all of your work on this, Bill.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion, please, to receive the presentation? Counselor Prinsen, Counselor Brandhorst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Prinsen, Brandhorst motion that the presentation by Bill Sanderson, General Manager, Quinney Waste Solutions, Regarding Blue Box Recycling Transition Update be received.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, up next is comments from the audience, and I have two pre-registered comments. The first one is Berinder Gill, Executive Director, Prince Edward Family Health Team Regarding Agenda Item 7.3, Designate Municipal Land for Medical Building Development. Berinder, welcome. You're familiar with the process, we've seen you a few times, you'll have three minutes.
Awesome, thank you. Just wanting to provide an official or formal comment in regards to the Community Services Report, CSP 162024, I believe was the title of that report. I do want to take an opportunity to thank council members, specifically Counselor Nyman and Counselor McNaughton, along with county staff and community partners for serving, first on the Primary Care Infrastructure Working Group, and the work that it has taken to get to this point. PFIT has been an integral member of the working group, and we're hopeful that we will be able to further strengthen our partnership with the municipality by moving ahead in the process to explore and apply for funding to bring a health hub, medical building, to fruition here in Prince Edward County. A health hub, at this point in time, is more important now than ever before, providing affordable space for medical professionals to help limit overhead costs to practice and co-location of services in one space or neighborhood would have benefits of its own. This concept also fits well with future plans for primary care in our community, and I do look forward to coming back to council later on in the fall to share some of the developments that are happening on the primary care front as we work to transform the system of care we have here. As for working with the Ministry of Health capital branch, it can be a long and arduous process, and funding certainly isn't guaranteed, but many health service providers have come before us who have been successful in a venture of a similar nature, and what we have here is somewhat unique and bolsters our position, and that is a strong municipal partner, and I think we now have an exceptional history of working well together and all that can be accomplished as a result of that. So it's important for us to explore all possible opportunities and certainly leave no stone unturned. That's it, thank you.
Questions from members of council, and I know we're probably going to have a good, healthy discussion about that item, so anyways, Counselor Brandhorst.
I just want to teaser before the discussion starts. Specifically, I noticed that on that report, they said that in original discussions, the housing needed for doctors was a primary ask, but then I read in the report that it said that the DAN network was working really well. Would you like to just, do you know any numbers about how that has been working, or do, like, has the community really came forward to help our doctors out, or?
So yes, yeah, the doctor accommodation network that we have here has been working extremely, extremely well, and while it was a priority for the Primary Care Infrastructure Working Group, I think it became clear that the DAN network, or DAN, is working well in the community, certainly has kind of supported that effort.
That's exciting to hear.
Any other questions for Berinder? Mayor Ferguson?
I'll jump in here, because I got information last night about the success of the DAN, and there are dozens of property owners who volunteered their, either their homes or places in their homes for doctor accommodation, so it's working very, very well. So I just want to provide that update that I got last night.
Any further questions for members of council? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Berinder. Next up, we have Karen Mayer, Regarding Item 4.1, the Queen Elizabeth Redevelopment Project. Karen?
Hi.
Hi.
And I'll remind you, you have three minutes, and I'll give you a 30-second heads-up.
Okay, I'll be quick. So I'm just, full disclosure, I'm a Central Street resident, and I'm also on the Board of Directors of Hospice. I want to tell you a little bit about hospice and how we've grown over the past ten or years. We have three different programs. We have a visiting volunteer program for when people are first diagnosed with a life-limiting illness, offer support, respite for family members, groceries, anything they need. We also offer the residential hospice, so for the last weeks or days of life, people are in the hospice and they stay there. And then after, there is the grief and bereavement program to support, nervous, to support the families afterwards. We've got different programs and grief and support and bereavement programs for them. Right now, in the county, there are three different options for when people die. So one is to go to the hospital, and that's really not a great option, ties up resources that are better used elsewhere. Number two is hospice. We have a great staff ratio, we have three residents and two staff, a nurse and a PSW. Or the other one is to die at home. In terms of dying at home, the the resources are not there for supports. So, I mean, for an example, my mother died a month ago, because I'm a nurse, I kept her at home, and palliative patients get the maximum number of visits. We got two nursing visits. One was when she first went palliative to set up some sub-Q lines. I was up for four days giving her meds every two hours, and then they came to pronounce her at the end. So, and that was fine for me, but for the general public, the resources are not there. That ends up with a 911 call, going to the hospital, which is not, not a good solution. So we're a little bit late coming to the table, but we really hope you'll consider working with us, or consider us, we'll have to come up with some options, but we're really interested in purchasing the spot and developing probably some community resources as well, some community buildings and the hospice. We haven't figured out exactly what the details are going to be, but we would, we will certainly have something ready for November 1st.
Any questions from members of council? Councillor Pennell?
Thank you for what you do. It's greatly needed, and I do believe, from this meeting being streamed, there may be people out there that would like to come forward financially to help out, and I think it is something wonderful that can be done for the community if people would step forward and offer money for a well-needed thing, as any of us may face that in the future.
I think it's good for, really good for hospice, it's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for the entire community. Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions from members of council? I'm going to ask the CAO something. Would it be possible to connect Karen and the hospice? You've already made notes, sorry, way ahead of me.
So Brander reached out to Adam a week ago, we just heard back two days ago, so he's going to try to connect us with a developer.
Perfect, that's kind of where I was going with this, that if there, if there is a possibility of of some kind of cooperation, then absolutely should be considered, at least considered as part of the project, so. Okay, one more ask, no more, any further questions? No? Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything that you do. Okay, so comments from the audience, so now I'll ask if there is anyone present that wishes to make a comment on any item on the agenda. I'm not seeing anyone, so, okay. So now I need a motion to receive the comments from the audience. Councillor Maynard, councillor Pennell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maynard, Pennell motion that the comments from the audience be received.
Okay, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, so we are now moving on to items for consideration. 7.1, Report of the Finance and IT Department, dated August 29, 2024, Regarding Proposed Development Charge Study For Future Water/Wastewater Infrastructure and 2023 DC Annual Treasurer's Report. And would you like a motion on the floor first, Madam Clerk? Okay, so I need a mover and seconder to put the motion on the floor. Councillor Prinsen, councillor Maynard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a Prinsen, Maynard motion that council receive report FIN-13-2024, two, that the treasurer be directed to forward the statement contained in Appendix 1 to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing in accordance with Development Charges Act 1997 and Ontario Regulation 8298, three, that council direct staff to procure consultant to begin a development charge background study for water and wastewater infrastructure requirements throughout the municipality in 2024 with funds from the study's reserve.
Okay, Director Carter is unavailable today, so in her place is CAO, Marcia Wallace. Go ahead.
Yeah, so through the chair to council committee, I don't have a lot to add, other than the first part of this is a legislative obligation, and so it does include statements so that everyone can understand what we've collected. You'll note that collection of development charges is low on the Wellington area-specific development charge, and that is directly related to infrastructure in the conversation we had on Tuesday. So this is just a reporting, I'm hoping you're not going to ask a lot of questions about those charts. The second part of this is also related to the conversation we had on Tuesday at council, which is beginning a development charge background study, and as the report outlines, this conversation has also happened at Audit Committee, and on Tuesday, council passed several recommendations of audit that would change or add to the scope of a future development charge study. Staff are proposing we go out to tender, as this is not a typical development charge study now. It would involve reopening the area-specific one for water/wastewater, look at Picton from a water/wastewater perspective, because right now we only have connection charges, which are far inferior in terms of the full cost recovery, and and look at our several bylaws that exist right now for development charges countywide. So it's a fair bit of work here. So we would be, normally, we would wait until the budget to bring forward a study request, but given our interest in trying to get something, a bylaw back in front of council before the end of Q1 2025, so that before we hit the next construction season, we have development charges and a framework to hold developers to, we feel we should move now, so that's why it's on the agenda. Happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. So I have councillor Pennell, councillor Hirsch, and then councillor Maynard.
My question is, when we're looking at development charges, this will affect the rural customers as well, and I'm wondering how, as we look forward, we're going to be spending a lot of money on water, but the person that's in the countryside has got to spend money on water and sewer for themselves. So is there any way of differentiating between the two as we look at development fees in the future?
To the chair, to councillor Pennell. So that's a good question. Our budgets are always split municipally as a tax budget and a rates budget, and development charges would have to be applied the same way. So the development charges that relate to the tax side of our budget, right now, it is more than a dozen different bylaws because of a previous legislation that we broke it all apart, now they've changed the legislation again, we want to put it all back together. We expect that's more administrative and shouldn't greatly impact the development charges way of doing things for those that are countywide, and that's what would impact the rural residents. When it comes to water/wastewater, we're, we're going to be looking at development charges that would only apply to the development where infrastructure is happening from a water/wastewater perspective, and anything that is not covered from development charges, paid for by developers, would go to ratepayers, which is only those who have water from the municipality. So really, this is about trying to both lessen the pressure on the tax base by having development pay for things that fit the broad countywide development charge, and to create a development charge in the water/wastewater space so that development can pay more of the charge and reduce the burden on the rate base. So it should have, there will be no, taxes and rates don't mix, so the rural ratepayers don't pay for the water infrastructure.
Councillor Hirsch, and then councillor Maynard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Marcia. I think the rationale, and I'll just speak to paragraph three, which is the study, the rationale is very well laid out in this document, and I'm, I'm pleased that council accepted the work that Audit Committee has done, which is going to help to perhaps come up with a less challengeable study than we've seen in the past. My only question is, how quickly can we have this happen? Because this is what really gets the Picton developers on, onto, on board in terms of development charges for water/wastewater, so the sooner the better, no?
Through the chair to councillor Hirsch, yeah, so as I said on Tuesday night, there, there's only four different ways we can collect money, grants, taxes, rates, and development charges, and in the, in the case of water/wastewater, you can't use taxes, you can only use rates, grants, or development charges. So our tools are kind of limited here, so that is why staff are recommending we move immediately. Should council pass, sorry, should committee pass this today, it would be ratified at the Committee of the Hall on the 10th. One of the motions that councils passed from Audit Committee has the scope of a study going back to Audit Committee before it goes out. Audit Committee is looking to set up a special, their regular next meeting is November, but they're looking to set up an October meeting to deal with some unfinished business, so we could bring it to the October meeting, probably take four to six weeks to try to tender and move this forward, but so we would be looking by the end of the year to be doing the background work, hopefully consultation early in the new year, and work to bring forward a bylaw before the end of the first quarter, back to council for discussion, so that we have a framework in place by the spring, when, when we would expect development to occur. When it comes to the development community, and we committed to bring forward a, more on a financing strategy overarching, as it applies to water/wastewater infrastructure in particular, we're planning to bring the first part of that conversation back in the early fall. We would see, once there's a conversation on a development charge, that's the tool you can use to look at upfront agreements and have developers pay development charges in advance, but they can't pay unless they know what the charge is, and they don't know what the charge is till the bylaw's done. So it would allow us to at least start that conversation, but these things would move in parallel, so our, our interest is to get a bylaw in place, it needs a lot of consultation, but hopefully get a bylaw in place by the end of the first quarter, early second quarter.
Councillor Maynard?
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward. This is something that would have been nice if we had have started many years ago, but better, better late than, better late than never. On the non-water/wastewater development charges, we've, we've got a slate of things that we're going to be put money, or are putting money towards. Is that a finite list, or is there consideration when we go through this to adding anything else that might be eligible for development charges?
Through the chair to councillor Maynard, yeah, the legislation tells you what categories of things that you can do, and that has changed once again, so we'd have to go back. For example, studies were not included, now they are, so this study, should council approve it, would be an eligible cost that we could take on the development charges. But, so we look to the legislation and what they allow, but then, then we would look to our asset management planning work, and where we see the costs, particularly over the next five years, that would, that a case can be made that a large portion of that benefit goes to new homeowners, as opposed to existing members of the community. So that's really, and that's the, the analysis and consultation that really happens in, in development charge background studies, is how much of that is necessary because of the, the community that lives here today, and how much of that is necessary to serve the new community. So it's, it's a, it's a bit of a balance, but absolutely, we look to put as much into the development charge that makes sense, without making the development charge so high that it doesn't work. It would also be the time where we can address any concerns around the, the apportionment of commercial to residential space in terms of the cost estimates and the revenue potentially generated in a development charge. So that's where we would fix that element as well.
Thank you. Can I have a quick follow-up? I'll look at the mic. Just as an addition, it's, it's in Attachment 3, and it was the, the list that we got from, whatever, page 26, which is the, you know, the, the estimated development charges that will, or the bills that will, those average DCs, is that, is that a water and, is that like full development, like at the very end of that, it says average DCs of 20,000, then it breaks it down by the, by the guesstimate on what the?
So through the chair to councillor Maynard, yes, this is page 26 in the package, or Attachment 3 to the report. This was a bit of a shot in the dark, because it's, it's estimating at 20,000 per unit as an average development charge, and, and there's a lot to be settled in all, in all of these different projects, to be able to make a better guess, and of course, we don't have a development charge, but this is just the water/wastewater. So it's, it's, it's only that portion of the development charge.
And if, sorry, if, so I'm assuming at some point they'll also incorporate any growth that there might be in Rossmore, Karen Place, Consecon into that as well?
Yes, so through the chair-
At a different, obviously, at a different rate as well.
So through the chair to councillor Maynard, we haven't obviously done the study, I would strongly suspect we will end up with at least two separate bylaws. One would be the general, and the other would be the water/wastewater. It's the cleanest way to then account for where development revenue is coming into the separate rates and taxes budget. So at minimum, we're going to have two separate ones. The chart was used in a different report, which is why it focuses on Picton and Wellington, and it is where the majority of the growth is coming, but absolutely, we would look at all projected growth, where there's going to be pressure on water/wastewater infrastructure. If, in the case of Consecon or Rossmore, where we leverage partial servicing, or Bloomfield for that matter, but where we leverage partial water-only servicing, if there's no additional upgrades needed, then there would be no development charge eligible. So you have to, need to spend more to then make a charge for it.
Thank you very much.
Questions from members of council? No? If anybody's interested in some extra reading, Quinney West and Belleville are going through the same process. Last number I saw, and I can't remember if it's Quinney West or Belleville, but they're looking at 37,000 per residential unit as a DC, so we're, I think that's the high end, but anyways, a little extra reading if anybody wants to go do that research and follow what our neighbors are doing, so anyways. If there's nothing further, then I'll call, I'm just going to look to councillor Engelsdorfer, are you? Nope, okay. So I'll call the motion, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
If I may.
On what?
Just as a, just as a brief addendum, because I did the, the same, and it is in the, Belleville for 2024, single and semi-detached for effective January 1, 2024, is just, just barely shy of $30,000. That's water and everything else can be included.
Yeah, so again, extra reading for everybody if we don't have enough already.
It's of interest.
Yes, so we are now at item 7.2. Could I have a mover and seconder for that motion, please? Mover and seconder, councillor Nyman, councillor Branderhorst?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nyman, Branderhorst motion, that council receive report FIN 142024, that the treasurer be directed to forward a statement contained in Attachment 1 to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing in accordance with Section 42 of the Planning Act, and that council direct staff to bring forward- and that council direct staff to bring forward budget proposals which allocate the parkland funds in proximity to geography where they were collected.
Madam CAO?
So again, I'm pitch hitting here for the treasurer, but this is another regular annual report that we need to report parkland dedication funds. So under the Planning Act, you're either to give land or you give money. And so every development is either giving land or money towards parkland. And new legislation from a year or so ago requires a municipality to spend 70% of the money it collects in a given year so that you're not hoarding it and not using it. It's supposed to go to parks. So you can't use it to upgrade an existing park. You're supposed to make a new park or something different. You know, add to things, not just improve things. So what we had accumulated, an amount. The other thing is that the Planning Act is agnostic to where you spend it. So technically, we could spend it all on one thing, anywhere we want. What we did at the last budget in '24 was we brought a proposal forward that said we'd been accumulating it for a while. We had just under $1 million. Let's divide it up based on ward. And that report went forward, and that is what you approved in your '24 budget. Those projects are underway, and we are working hard to do the consultation and hopefully bring something forward to those communities that is popular and well-used. This is, the second motion is really trying to make sure that as we accumulate annually, we want to continue with that spirit of that and where possible, try to use it in areas closer to where it was collected. So where the money comes from is where we would allocate projects in the '25 budget to move forward. So that's what this report and the tables try to show you what we have collected as of 2023.
Great. Counsel Nyman, followed by Counsel Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a quick question. So I think I'm on page 29. So just where it said the parkland collected in 2023. So I'm just wondering, so Picton, it shows 19,900. Bloomfield Hollowell shows 7,500. I'm just wondering for the development on Talbot and in that area, as well as between 33 and Talbot, most of that is in Hollowell. I guess I'm just want to make sure that the money is going where it should be.
Okay, through the chair to Counsel Nyman. So most of the subdivisions that we approve here in the municipality, we don't get money for, we get parkland. So the subdivision on Talbot, for example, got a portion of the overall landmass that was dedicated to a park that would be created once the houses are built and become part of that neighborhood. So we tend to collect parkland when you have an infill project. It's really tight. The land, there's no available land. So things in town or one-off residential or one or two residential units getting built, that's where we tend to get the money because the land is not big enough or it's not appropriate for a park. So in terms of how the money got assigned, the money, we looked at where the property was and which ward it was in. So yeah, and keep in mind, this is what was, that chart is showing you on page 29 what was collected in '23. But the previous page includes much larger sums because we had historic money that we applied to. So year over year, there's not a lot of money collected. And I would expect as development moves forward, most of the developments we're talking about with the previous chart we were just looking at on development charges, we're going to get land, not money. So it probably won't be a lot of money going forward. It'll be, it's just we have a bit of a glut right now because we didn't spend it.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Maynard?
Thank you. And I don't know whether there's really any staff here from this, but I really want to thank staff for finally, you know, navigating the system so that we could actually use some of this, some of this collected money. I know that there was likely still, or there was up until very recently, money since pre-amalgamation as Ameliusburg actually had parkland funds. And we could never find a way to, I mean, we had large parks that needed, could use new stuff that wasn't replacing things, but it was only for land. So I really appreciate the fact that staff has finally found a way to unlock that $230,000 that's sitting in Ameliusburg. We'll get lots of upgrades, we'll still have a little bit left. And I think in most cases, I would rather see, instead of having a lot of small parks that we will take over as much as possible, that we do use the cash in lieu of, as opposed to having, you know, little pieces of sometimes unused green space and especially in the smaller developments.
Through the chair to Counsel Maynard, I think that's an excellent point and maybe something that all of council wants to think about as files come forward from a planning perspective. We tend to focus on the big zoning questions. And I'm not sure I see a lot of conversation about where's the parkland coming from? Where is it going to be on site? What would, why was it parkland instead of parkland in lieu funds? And what's the best choice? When you look at a development in the context of other developments, those are important questions to consider, and I know something that staff look at. So and anybody who's interested in any of these projects, like we are very open to what they end up becoming. This was meant to be a very community-driven exercise. And I know that staff have worked with all of the counselors locally on trying to get consultation going, and it seems to be pretty popular with those who participate. So if you want to follow along in any ward, the information's on the Have Your Say page, and you can see what's being talked about and put your ideas forward. And we hope to land as many of these as possible to meet our 70% requirement before the end of the year.
Okay. Any further questions? No? I'll just add my voice to the choir and say that the very public process, that Counsel McNauten and I went, you know, we spent an afternoon talking to residents. I think that is the best and most collaborative way to build what the community wants. And I do somewhat agree that maybe it's better for the community to decide what it needs and wants and where it wants it, as opposed to a developer saying, I'm just going to give you this little piece of land off in the corner, and then we end up having to deal with it afterwards. So anyways, this is great. I want to thank staff very much, and I'm looking forward to continuing that conversation with the community and residents in the various areas. So I have a motion on the floor if there's no further que... Oh. Oh, okay. You're getting ahead of me. So I'll call the motion, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, thank you. And we now have item 7.3. Julianne is here for the report of the Community Services Programs and Initiatives Department dated August 29, 2024 regarding designating municipal land for medical building development. So once again, I'll ask that the motion be put on the floor, and then we'll turn it over to Julianne for some background. Counsel Nyman and Counsel Grosso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Nyman, Grosso, motion that council receive report CSP 162024 that council resolve parts 4, 5, 7, 9, and 11 of reference plan 47R-5933, which are part of the parcel of municipal land identified by rural number and located at 375 Main Street East, Picton, be designated for the purpose of partnering with the Prince Edward Family Health Team to develop a purpose-built medical facility leveraging funding available through the Ministry of Health Capital Branch Funding Program. That council direct the mayor and CAO to write letters of support and/or enter into a letter of intent with P E F H T as required to support the funding application process and to return to council and/or the Planning and Development Committee with any policy, bylaw, or zoning requirements to support the project. That the Primary Care Infrastructure Working Group be dissolved and letters of appreciation be sent to its members.
Julianne, floor is yours.
Thank you. Through the chair to members of council. I don't have much to say by way of a preamble to this other than to acknowledge that the recommendation in the report are the recommendations of the Primary Care Infrastructure Working Group. And the staff report is there to provide context and considerations for how to implement those recommendations. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have, and there are members of that working group around the horseshoe as well today who might have things to contribute as well.
Okay. So Counsel Maynard, Counsel Hirsch? Go ahead.
Thank you. This is very promising. The only question I had was regarding the parking for the hub. And that would not just be staff parking. I just know where there's other facilities, where there's another hub, that the parking, especially during the drop-off and pickup time, is, I would say, nothing less than chaotic. And to try and so that, to try and envision how, you know, at the same time, when a, where doctor offices or clinics might also be busy in the afternoon is, you know. I know that it says that, you'll try and find, but when I look at the map, I'm thinking like, you know, that, yeah. That was really my only concern because I know that to drop off and pick up at daycares in particular with lots of room can be chaotic, let alone when it's constrained.
Through the chair, I've been there, done the drop-off before. And yeah, as noted in the report, it would be certainly something that P-FIT and the municipality have acknowledged at an early stage would be a potential conflict in this process and that we're willing to work together to try to figure out some solutions in the design of the site.
Like maybe a dedicated lane or a little piece of the, yeah, okay, something.
Counsel Hirsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this report, Julianne. I just noticed in the options that were considered for other pieces of land or places, notable absence is the existing hospital building. So I'm taking, there's a good reason for that. I know many people think it should be reused, but maybe that's not possible. So could you enlighten us in respect of this exercise anyway?
Through the chair to Counsel Hirsch, I may ask if there were members of the working group who were present for more of the meetings than I was to comment on whether that was considered by the working group? Because I don't know the answer to that, sorry.
Counsel Nyman, I believe you were part of that group, right?
Yes. So the building, the hospital, the existing building is going to be tore down, and that's going to be the parking lot for the new hospital.
Okay, so that is a firm decision that's been taken.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Counsel Nyman, you had something else you, question or comment? Yep?
Yeah, it's more just a comment. Basically, the working group, which we sat on, Counsel McNauten, Grosso, and myself, with Sarah Moffett, and then staff was there and some of the other people that were there, worked hard and kind of beat the bushes to figure out where the best place was to get the best parcel of land. And this was the best possible place. The doctors wanted it close to the new hospital, which this is what it is. And, you know, staff did good work. And this is the consensus that we came to. And I think that if the medical team can get the funding, it could be a good partnership going forward.
Mayor Ferguson and then Counsel Brandhorst.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. I mean, it's a great report. Thank you very much. I just want to make clear that the grant, is there a maximum to the, there doesn't seem to be a maximum can apply for? So the grant would cover construction of the facility? Like all the building, all the stuff that goes into a building?
Through the chair to the mayor. My understanding in conversation with Berinder from the Family Health Team is that it is sort of a snout-to-tail kind of a grant where it could cover all of the pre-development, the studies, the construction, everything that would be required to take that piece of property to its completion. And I don't know if there is a maximum amount on the value of the grant, but what Berinder has shared with us is that this would be within the scope of what would be fully funded through that type of program.
Okay, thanks. I just want clarity on that.
Counsel Brandhorst?
Just out of some curiosity, thank you for bringing this forward and everybody that did the work on that working group is especially important with, I think, getting more doctors to come in the area. My question is, is the, are the doctors or the Prince Edward Family Health Team, do you know, not interested in Queen Elizabeth anymore? Or like potentially renting the space in it? Is this an alternative or an extension or just to be determined?
Through the chair to Counsel Brandhorst, it is, there are multiple options and multiple solutions that would be required to meet all of the needs. So they're still in that project as well.
Counsel Pennell?
I don't really have a question, but I believe that this group is coming up with something that is a benefit to the county entirely, every single taxpayer. And I believe just carry on and get what you can get because we need it.
Okay, any further questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Julianne, for this. Obviously, I do have one question, and it has to do, it should be obvious, with regards to, Counsel Maynard brought up the issue of staff and parents at the hub. But more importantly, I'm most likely going to get a phone call or two with regards to losing the ability, the Fair Board losing the ability to utilize that space. How, my only question is how, because I'm not generally concerned. I think this is absolutely the best use of that parcel of land for the long term and for the entire community. How is the conversation going with the Fair Board?
Through the chair to Counsel St. Jean. Those conversations have been led by Director Lindsay and Director Cowan. They started many months ago when this property was also being considered as a laydown area for construction for the hospital. So they have been talking about the potential loss of parking in that parking lot for the long term over a number of months. And my understanding is that the conversations are productive and that they're looking for other solutions. And we're also, again, speaking with the Family Health Team about how this site could be designed in such a way that on the fair weekend, it could, the parking lot could continue to be used if medical services aren't being offered at that time. So and we're also working with the Fair Board on transit options for the fair, for example, so that people can leave their vehicles at home and have other ways to access the fair. So coming at it from a lot of different angles.
Okay, perfect. That's, thank you, thank you very much. Like I said, generally, I have no concerns. I think this is the right thing, and I'd like to compliment the, well, the two council members that are here, for sure, for their efforts to get this done. I think this is an excellent, excellent opportunity for our community and great partnership with, to show that we are creating an environment for, to improve our medical situation here in the county. So thank you. All in favor? That's carried. Okay, thank you. And 7.4, last item on the agenda, well, next to last. Resolution from Counsel Pennell seeking council support for Salem Road. So I'll look to Counsel Pennell to put the motion on the floor if he has a seconder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Grosso seconding that.
Pennell, Grosso motion that operational services staff be directed to include Salem Road in the next five-year road program, 2028 to 2033.
Okay, and you go ahead and speak to it if you wish, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm certain every councillor has had, and including the mayor, to travel the road and know what extent. In bringing this motion forward, we have many bad roads in Ameliausburg. I believe, like, Victoria Road is already on the outlook, and staff are aware of that. Ridley Street and Rosmore, which, once again, we're starting a drainage program down there, so that, that road. And I believe that the outlook right now is to redo that road in 2037. I believe we'd be having to use bulldozers to, to travel, because it's in not bad a shape. And I'm hoping maybe the director may have some response as to what he feels on it.
Okay. Yes, I was just going to go there next, and I would invite Director, or Director of Operations to come forward, in the event that a member of council would like to ask a specific question. So, did you want to ask a question first, Your Worship?
Just for clarification, Councillor Pennell, rehabilitation of the entirety of the road? Or is there a portion of the road? Because...
No. The best part of the road has been redone three times. The poorest part has been gone for, since prior to amalgamation. And so far, we haven't spent too much money on it.
Okay, so the, the portion from, just...
It's, it's a portion that wasn't completed a couple of years ago.
Right, so the, the portion from, say, Consecon.
County Road 2 to, I'm thinking of names.
But from, it's that end that needs the work.
Yeah.
Okay. Just want clarification, not the whole thing.
East End.
Yeah.
Okay, Councillor Brandershaw, and then Councillor Prinsen, I saw your hand up?
No, I...
Oh, you were just waving at flies, okay.
So I will, the only suggestion I have to this motion, because I'm not in support of it, because Salem Road can come after County Road 18, in my opinion, no offense. Which is why we have this report, is because we all have our own roads that we would rather prioritize over other main roads. I mean, mine is Sandbanks, so like, it, like, we all have our own entities that we would love to get fixed. My only suggestion moving forward is that to even consider this motion would be, take one of your other roads in Ameliausburg and get that, like, pick your babies at this point, and that are worth the same amount of money. Because I'm not moving any money from another single ward to fix this one.
Okay.
Can I respond?
Yes, I'll allow you to respond. I, I think that's fair, because you're the, you're the one that's presenting this.
All I want to say is, we have a five-year plan. We're, in the next two year, will complete the five-year plan at that point. As we move forward, I'm asking for it to be considered in that. And any other roads that need fixed as well can come forward in that report. And if you got a road, come in.
Okay. Councillor Nyman, then Councillor Hirsch, then I'll put, no, okay. Councillor Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I guess, I don't know if I can ask staff something, but, so I, I guess, instead of doing the whole road and going away with the plan, is there the opportunity or the budget there to do some spot repairs on some of the road? Salem Road or some of the other roads that could get it through, make it last a little bit longer and still carry on with what the plan is?
So, through the chair, I just want to be really clear, that when this five-year plan is over and we build the next five-year plan, it is not, put up your hand for what road you like, and that's how we make the plan. The plan is based on the, we can revisit the criteria that drive the, the road priorities, and we absolutely will do that as part of our asset management conversations this winter. But the, the plan originally was based on criteria set by council that eventually identifies the best use of the money. And, and we did have that conversation, that there was going to be very poor roads that don't get addressed, because they're too far gone for the money to be well-spent. And that was a choice made at the, at the time. At the same time as that conversation, the last two years of budget, we've had a, what we call the Spot Repair Program, that is an attempt to address the fact that, notwithstanding the plan, just because a road is not, is so far gone that it doesn't make financial sense to spend money rehabilitating it, it doesn't mean that we should do nothing for the residents. So, spot repair was done on some of the worst places. And I'll ask Director Gilmore to identify what this year's spot repair program is doing and, and how that might relate to this road.
Yes, we do have a spot repair program that is, our, our schedule is already done, that's already been approved. However, we can make minor adjustments going into possibly 2025. So back to Salem Road, it will be considered, all these, I, I have a long list of roads, I get calls every day on some roads, and all the roads are being considered. So we, we currently have an approved budget for spot repair, and I will consider all the roads, and I will determine which one should be, should be done.
A follow-up?
Yeah, so, sorry, the budget is, is done. Our program is done for 2024, so I'm looking at 2025 right now.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Okay, so, just so that, I guess I understand more. So the spot repair budget that we had for 2024 i- is already been accounted for, so now any repairs, spot repairs would be on the agenda for 2025, whatever you see fit. And I'm along the same lines. I've always said we need a, a list of what roads we're doing, and then we have to stick to that list. So, I, I just, for me, I just can't see, I guess I can't support taking roads off, adding roads and whatever, because the old saying is, plan your work and work your plan. And if, if we start changing, throwing roads on here and there, we're just going back and we're going to end up being further and further behind. So, I guess, next year, you could do, we could do a little, a couple of spot repairs in some of the worst areas of the road, I'd be okay with that.
Councillor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Another question for the director. Am I correct in recalling that we're going to redo the, the technical analysis of the roads in preparation for the next five-year plan?
Through you, Chair. Yes, it, we will be redoing another five-year plan. That will be in the 2026 budget. And that's where we will, staff, asset management, street scan, and the human element, staffing, will, will combine all our information and will produce another five-year plan.
Thank you. I'm reasonably confident that, that section of Salem will filter its way to the top of the list, myself, having driven lots of roads in the county. It is clearly one of the worst. And I suspect that the street scan results with the other factors will, will put it in the, in the next five years, anyway. Thank you.
Councillor Maynard? And then, did you want back, no? Okay. So, Councillor Maynard.
Well, thank you. When this list was originally put out, right, like, I mean, we all had, we all had our opinions. And, and, I mean, I know, and I've, I've driven a lot of roads in the county where the, where typically, and by and large, the worst roads are. And it could be our, it could be our soil conditions, it could be a number of things. But just to say that we have a lot of, and these are not crossroads, these are the ones that I would call, well, our county roads, as well as our, what I would call concession roads, are in, are in pretty horrendous shape. What I was hoping was going to come, and when you said the 2026 budget, I would have really preferred, I thought we would maybe see it in the 2025 budget, is a, is that street scan to be, to be redone. I wasn't confident in what we got back the first time, and I just think that we need to really have a better look at the conditions and the, the number of homes, the road classifications. Now, those road classifications are getting affected by the, by the quality of the road, and you can't really use traffic counts, because traffic that should be traveling on those roads is no longer traveling on those roads. And, and then we need council to step up and increase the budget that we spend on our rural roads as one of our primary assets, and something that has been underfunded for years. So that's an overall statement. I will note that County Road 18 did get some micro-surfacing this year, it was on the list for it anyways, it's okay. So, we also have to take into account that we've got now many single-surface treated roads, and some of them in Ameliausburg, that they couldn't do for single-surface treating. So that should have maybe freed up some, because they were already too far gone. They then fell into that double-seed surface treating. So I don't think that we can wait another two years before we make some, some adjustments to our roads plan. And one of the ways that we could do that and, and help staff to, to actually get there is by making sure that we put an adequate, a very adequate budget towards our number-one infrastructure priority. And then we maybe will have this conversation less, and we don't have to have that, you know, that battle about, about which road, because it's, it's just untenable. There, you know, and, and I've said it, and I will keep saying it, as a resident of Consecon, for me to get from Consecon to, to Ameliausburg, there is really without going 10 kilometers out of my way. It's not 19, it sure isn't Salem. If you go down Lakeside, you still have to get on Malville and come across the dirt road of Whitney. There is no good way for me to get between two, between, between two communities, which, when we did the street scan, was supposed to be one of the things that was considered, of the connection of, of communities. I, I really would like to see, but I just don't think, this is not the way to do it. But I'll be working on something different, because I think, okay, I'm going to ask the question, is there any way that, that the street scan, if we were to budget for it, could be done in, in the, it next year, as opposed to the 2026 budget?
Through you, Chair. That's ultimately going to be council's decision, however, I don't think the plan is going to change. Like, our plan is set in stone until 2027. I know staff don't want to be in the position where we're taking off a road off that plan. So I think 2026 is going to be a heavily discussed road plan for the, for the year, for our next five-year plan. So, having it in the budget this year, next year, I, I don't think it's going to change the current five-year plan that we have.
But we already, but we already have changed the plan, because many of those single-surface treated roads that are now deteriorating into, you know, those already have, those already have been removed from the list. So we already have deviated from the plan. So the sooner we get that data, the sooner we can build a, a better plan and allow council then the opportunity, if we so, if we see fit, to allocate, to, you know, allocate more money to what I still consider as our number, what should be our, is our main infrastructure.
Mayor Ferguson and then Councillor Pennell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things, when, when I was first elected in 2014, and Councillor Nyman was part of, part of that, that group, we used to go through the, the roads rehabilitation exercise, as I'm sure you recall, and everybody, all the ward councillors would come up with the roads that they shot, thought should be on the priority list, and, and it became, it was awful to deal with. Then the plan was established that we have in place, the plan's going to be, going to be reviewed and will, will very likely be redone. But it took a lot of work to get a plan in place, and I'm, my opinion is, we have a plan, we stick to the plan. If, if adjustments need to be made, that's something that the operations staff can bring forward to council for consideration. It becomes, becomes a pretty slippery slope if we start making adjustments on the basis of what we individually perceive as the needs. There are plenty of, all kinds of roads that need rehabilitation. As I mentioned to council this morning, when I talked about the county, county road, or the Skyway Bridge completion yesterday, and $53 million was spent on that versus half of that being spent on, on County Road 49. You know, we, we've got all kinds of roads, and, and I, I understand Salem Road, I've been, go along Salem Road quite frequently, but I support sticking with the plan and, and not, not wavering from that. And I also want to thank you, Troy, for the, the responses that you provide to members of the public who are vociferous in their, their concerns about road conditions, you know, that, that they are traveling along, but, but your, your responses are polite and, and I, I owe great credit to the municipality and the responsibility that we need to take to, to address residents' concerns. But I'm, I'm, I can't, can't, I won't support this resolution.
Councillor Pennell?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I take exception with some of your comments. I have not, through this motion, asked them to alter any plans that's in place now. What I'm asking, that the next time, it would come up. So, in no way, shape, or form. Haven't said that. The other thing is, if we don't start fixing some of the super-bad roads, I'm certain our, in, insurance collection from the county will go up. And further to that, we're literally doing thousands of dollars damage to vehicles driving those roads right now. And if you call the county, they'll say, well, you're driving too fast. And I had that happen myself. All I'd like to ask is, from the commissioner, is it time, as we move forward, not at the end of this period, we've got set up of the road, is it possible that when we are looking at roads, we're, rather than necessarily planning on a scan, that common sense, you know, like, I've been pretty impressed with you so far. But having said that, once again, common sense has got to come in on these roads. Plus, the farmers using them and that, too. But I do take exception to, Mr. Mayor, and I'm certain all the residents throughout Ameliausburg would take exception, too.
Could I just clarify?
Yes, I'll allow you to respond.
Yeah, well, my apologies, Councillor Pennell, I wasn't referring to that Salem Road at some point would be part of the plan, and we stick to the plan, whether Salem Road's on it or not on it. And as Councillor Maynard, as councillor, as councillor...
One, one at a time, please.
As Counselor, as Counselor Mayor suggested, she, I think it was Counselor Mayor suggested that, in all likelihood, Salem Road would be on that next-year plan. But we'll see. We'll see what comes forward from, from staff.
Counselor Grosso?
Yeah, I think what, thank you. I think what Counselor Pennell is really concerned about is that maybe, and I may be wrong, that the road was on the plan and it got bumped. So we're just, we would like it to see it on the next segment of it. No?
Do we need, do we need to pause, Madam Clerk? Oh, okay, all right. I just saw, we lost our connection there, so. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking that Counselor Pennell is trying to tell us, that it was on the plan.
Adam told us at the meeting, public meeting, and the mayor was there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions with regards to this item? Oh, okay, I do have one. With regards to the scheduling of the street, street scan process, or whatever it's called, and the process that you defined, let's put it that way, what's the cost of that, do we have, just a ballpark, I'm not looking for a, a hard figure on the, the, that particular part of the process?
So that's an engine, through the chair, to the chair, that is an engineering project, not an operations one. So we have the wrong director here to tell you. I do know, having had conversations with the street scan company, that they also have newer technology. So even if we look at what we, I believe we got a discount when we did it last time, because they happened to be in the area doing another municipality, and they offered us a, a cut rate if we would, you know, work with their timeline. So that's how we got it done last time. So it, it, and now they have better technology, so I'm sure the price is higher. So I, we don't know what that would be, but it would, it would fit within our, our study budget, our study reserve in terms of costing.
Would it be possible to, to provide an estimate, or at least what it cost us the last time as a baseline, so that we can, so the council can be aware of what the cost of that is, and then maybe at a future time, decide whether it should be included as a biannual budget item, or every three years, so that we...
I think we're getting away from the resolution that's on the floor.
So, no, it's all part of it, sir.
Okay.
Don't worry. I'm not gonna lead, lead us astray.
I will say that we did commit to bring back a pre-budget presentation. So I'll commit to having that answer for the pre-budget conversation, and we can certainly talk about it then.
Okay, all right. It's always important to have the most current data, regardless of what decision you're looking to make. Counselor Nyman, and then you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but it's, every chance I get, I want to make sure I say this part of it, is, and Troy already mentioned that you gotta have the human element to it. So we can't sit in the office and just look at the computer. We gotta go out and look at it. But we gotta also talk to the people who are on the roads and working on the roads. So that department, the operations department, has to be part of that conversation. It can't be just engineering. So they have to work together. There can be no more silos here. So I just want to make sure that's out there.
Through the chair, that is how it works. I was just saying that that particular study is not done by the operations, but they work very closely together. And we completely agree with you, Counselor Nyman.
Okay. Counselor Meenard?
Thank you. I mean, this is really difficult for me. I, I'd like to say, say that we, we stick with the plan, but, and it's, it's not just now. When this, when this came before us, I didn't support it because I didn't think it, it didn't, it didn't look right, it didn't feel right. I didn't have, I didn't have any confidence in that street scan. And I don't know whether that type of a tool, I'm not sure. I'd like to know what, you know, our neighboring municipalities using that, or are they relying, as you said, Counselor Nyman, on the, on the boots on the ground that have a better idea, you know, foot for foot, what our, what our roads look like. So I, like, this is really difficult, right? I mean, it's just asking to, if it said, you know, to consider it for the next five-year plan, which is, you know, still way too long. But I might, if, you know, if that's, if it just said, "Consider," instead of be directed to include, I would, I could probably support it. I, I do want to have a plan. I just don't think the way that we're doing it is correct. And, and, you know, and the, the director was kind enough to, to travel around with us on the roads in Ameliausburg. And I won't ask him for his opinion here in open session, but if any of you ask him, I think he'll tell you where, you know, what kind of a condition that we're in. And it's one of the few infrastructure pieces that, that the, that the largest population and the biggest tax base in this county gets, is their roads. And it's, 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 it's just, it's really disappointing. One further question. If we had more money in the budget, do we have, or could we have the capacity to do, to do this road and other roads sooner?
Think I know the answer. Go ahead.
Through you, Chair. Well, depending on how much more money, I don't have that price offhand. But yeah, more money would obviously get you more roads. But if you don't mind, Chair, I'll, I'll talk about street scan. I did have my, two meetings with street scan, and I can confirm that the human factor, the human element, is definitely involved with the, the final outcome of the program. So I will be heavily involved with the next process.
Yes, because this past process was not good.
Okay. Final word, Counselor Pennell?
I was going to say, if my secondor would be willing to go along with the change that Operational Services consider including Salem Road in the next five-year program. So it's not directing, but considering, I would be 100%.
I'd second that motion.
Pardon me, Madam Clerk?
Through the chair, just clarifying, as the mover of the motion suggesting this, this is a friendly amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not, not a, not a requiring a vote on an amendment. It's, okay. So, as I said, final word went to Counselor Pennell. So I'm going to call the motion as it's newly worded, to consider including Salem Road in the next five-year road program. So, all in favor? Four, five, six, and that, how many do, that carries? Yeah. Okay. And Counselor, moved by Counselor Brandhorst, seconded by Counselor Prinsen.
So it's a Brandhorst-Prinsen motion that this meeting now adjourn at 2:57 PM.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, everyone. It's been a pleasure being your chair this month and last month. And I...
Are you yelling out their signs in September?
13 months.